It's the zoning board of appeals meeting here on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The first order of business is approval of minutes for September twelve, two thousand and twenty-four. Any comments from the board members about this? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes from September twelve, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So that passes. Andrew Burbine was here and I was not at the October meeting, so I think we should wait on voting on that until...
I agree.
I agree. Okay, so we'll take no action on that. And then we have to wait until seven oh five to bring up our first petition. So we'll wait on that a few minutes. Do you think we need to acknowledge that Amy sent us an opinion on Bedford Street thing or just wait until that topic comes up?
I think we should for the topic. That's my point.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I suggest if you have nothing to discuss between now and seven oh five, you might want to take a recess so the cable TV guy doesn't have to tape you.
Yep.
Relax for four minutes.
People ask him.
Just as a courtesy, you guys can relax for four minutes.
It's now three and a half.
We keep talking about what to do if you'd like.
Yeah. Are you... Oh, do you need to take a vote on that even? We can just... Verizon says it's seven oh five, so I'd like to resume the meeting and our first order of business is the...
Continuance?
Continued hearing, a petition of Goslin Home Builders LLC for special permits under section one seventy-five dash twenty-one A two to allow for a duplex dwelling on Lot A Bedford Street and Lot B West Chapel Street and a variance under section one seventy-five dash forty B one to allow for driveway parking in the front yard of Lot A. The property is located at two oh seven Bedford Street on Assessors Map twenty-three, Lot twenty-five, in the transitional, yeah, transitional commercial zone. And your address yourself and your address.
Sure. For the record, my name is Attorney Sean Riley, five hundred Washington Street, here representing Goslin Home Builders LLC, Mr. Stephen Goslin, who's sitting to my left in the front row. We were here two months ago for this hearing, and if you recall, there are two lots being proposed, one with frontage on Bedford Street, one with frontage on West Chapel Street. They're both in the transitional commercials, commercial zone, and Mr. Goslin's proposing to build a duplex dwelling on each of the, on each of the two lots. There was a discrepancy in the discussion about whether a special permit was actually necessary or not, if you recall. The text of the transitional commercial bylaw clearly states that one and two family uses are allowed as of right, but in the chart, there was a, it said yes for a number of years, meaning it was allowed as of right, and then at some point, the chart changed as they, they published updated editions over the years, and it became a special permit on the chart. So it was our belief that the text, which never changed and which was obviously more descriptive, would rule. But at, at the meeting two months ago, we thought that it would be wise to just pause, let you guys talk to town council, get town council's advice, and we could proceed from there. So I believe Marion told us that we did get a response, and I don't want to speak for town council, so I guess I can let Marion do that.
So I spoke to attorney Amy Fussell, and the more stringent regulation applies, so the special permit is required. And then in the future, Commissioner Harris and I have plans to submit this to town for zoning bylaw correction at town meeting in April of two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you. And the, and the variance?
The variance is still required.
The variance is still required. It was the special permit we were only questioning.
I believe Attorney Fussell did recommend that interpretation, but said the board could make their own decision based on their interpretation of the law. So you could make a decision tonight that the special permit is not necessary due to the clear terms of the bylaw, or you could follow town council's recommendation and say the special permit is required. So I guess we need to hear you make that determination before we proceed further. I'm assuming what you're gonna do, but I'd like to hear from you guys.
All right. Okay, well, there was other people that came up and spoke, and I, do we have questions for him based on this?
Well, I think that, as he, as he said, where Amy is saying we, we need to do this. I just think we should discuss it first and then vote on it.
Right, but do we have to, we, we should also have to entertain other discussion from the, from...
I don't think so. I think this is just for the board. This will be just for the board.
This is just a decision, well, now we have to do the special permit. So it's something that the zoning board has to...
This will be just for us.
Okay, so I think we should have a motion to close the hearing for any public discussion.
I don't think we can do that. I think, I think, I think we need to just stay steady with, with, stay with the board right now and just...
Discuss it amongst ourselves.
The two attorneys have come up with their...
Yeah.
He has his...
Interpretation.
Interpretation.
And we have ours.
And personally, I think we should go with, my, my opinion. I think we should go with our, the town lawyer's saying.
Right, take the most conservative approach.
Right, and I think this is just for the board, to just bring it to the board here.
Okay.
We're not closing anything, we're not, no discussion from anybody, just, this has to be brought back to this, this table and voted on.
Because I guess we, the continuance was about...
It was about the special permit.
The, the public hearing had, a public discussion had closed by then.
Right, but it's not, this, nothing's closed completely right now. It's just bringing it back to the board, and we're just gonna vote on what the two lawyers have talked, their opinions.
Right.
And my opinion is that I would go with the town lawyer's opinion.
Yeah, I, I agree with that a hundred percent.
So the special point, a special permit is needed.
Right, in this case.
In this case.
If I can help, I would help formulate your motion. I think Mr. Magrilli is saying that he would move to adopt town council's recommendation that a special permit is required for both lots in the transitional commercial zone for the proposed use.
Sounds pretty good. I don't, I don't know if I want to add one, you know, right? Anything else?
That sounds like a good motion to be made by someone other than me. All right, so...
You want me to do it?
Yeah, but...
I motion that the zoning board of appeals accept the determination by legal counsel, Captain, to determine that a special permit is necessary for this vote, and we include that in the requirement of passing this vote.
Again, this is on... Okay. Petition LLC for special permit under one seventy-five dash twenty-one A two to allow a duplex dwelling on Lot A Bedford Street and Lot B West Chapel Street. All right, to, for special permit. So I'm not gonna read the rest, because we already know, we already read about the variance.
Right.
So we're gonna vote on that.
On, on just the special permit.
To approve that's gonna be a special permit.
Right, we have a second on the, on his motion. I motioned it, so...
You motioned it, I got a second. I just put in what I had to put in.
Added.
I got a second.
Yep. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so point of order here, because I think the continuance affected the... The, we still have to make a decision whether we're gonna grant the special permit, right?
Grant the special permit and the variance.
Right.
Right.
Mr. Riley, go ahead.
Thank you for your assistance to that. Okay, so procedurally, we're gonna proceed as has been applied for a special permit on the West Chapel Lot, West Chapel Street Lot, and a special permit in variance on the Bedford Street Lot. Bedford Street Lot, if you recall, required a variance because transitional commercial zone says you can't have parking in the front yard without a variance. It's supposed to be out in the backyard. And if you recall, there was a discussion at our previous hearing where that would require us to basically put the pavement in the backyard, which would be closer to the neighbors, which are down gradient. We thought it'd be better to put it in the front yard and have a grass backyard. Also, it allows us to keep the existing curb cutting route eighteen where it is. It has, we already went over, there's plenty of parking. We exceed the number of required parking spaces for both lots, but just talking for Lot A Bedford Street right now, we also talked about there's snow storage. You would ask about which was snow, we already addressed that issue. So in reality, I think the board was comfortable with the presentation about the variance for Lot A, and I don't think there was a lot of discussion about whether the special permit could be granted for Lot A Bedford Street. The bulk of it was a question focusing on the West Chapel Street Lot, whether the special permit would be granted for that. Right? Procedurally, I don't know if, if we want to take a vote on Lot A, and then I'll proceed with the discussion about West Chapel Street Lot B, or if you want one kind of general discussion, and we'll vote for both at the end.
Well, generally speaking, we start out, we, we vote separately on special permits and variances, even if they're for the same properties. So I don't know what you think, guys, but...
So, so it says here, a special permit under, allowed duplex dwelling on Lot A. So special permit on Lot A. Okay, then Lot B, a variance for the driveway. Okay.
Right. Right. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Regarding the variance for Lot A, and I would like to add a... I'm a little concerned with the parking in the front and not having any protection along the front parking lot area. I was thinking that we could have a guardrail or shrubbery as one of the conditions, just to protect the cars along that path.
We did, if you recall, we submitted a landscaping plan. There was gonna be a private hedge running just in that exact area.
Okay.
For those reasons, would also block headlights and glare for...
That's, that, that was too, too full for me, but for most of me, Sean, is, is, I've only been here thirty years, but I know how the plows come up...
Yep.
Route eighteen when it snows, and if there's back-to-back twenty-two-ton plows coming up the street, they, they push a wave of snow all over the sidewalk onto the property. I was just concerned with what was gonna happen to any of the vehicles parked along the front.
If you look at the plan, Mr. Manning, if I can, I know that I'm getting away from my phones.
Yep.
This is the edge of the sidewalk out here.
Right.
Here's the sidewalk, there's another ten feet of, like, till you get to the property line, and then probably another ten feet till you get to even our parking lot. So plenty of room for snow that's coming off of Route eighteen, plenty of room for some that's coming off our property.
Okay.
But just for landscaping to enhance it, we're gonna have a private hedge running in this area. You have a copy here.
Okay, I just wanted to validate that that was gonna be there. Just, I'm just thinking the protection of the, of the vehicles parked along eighteen, that's all.
No, I'd suggest if you, well, nobody can park on Route eighteen.
No, no, on the, facing out to Route eighteen. I'm just wondering what the wave of shit coming off the road, because they, they go up that street pretty fast, so...
Yep.
I've seen, I've, I only know this, Sean, because I'm coming out on Orange Street. I've had my car covered by the plows at the edge of Orange Street.
Every side street, I agree.
They don't stop, they just go.
And so to your point, Mr. Manning, I think if, when the time comes to approve the merit, the variance, if you approved it and the condition is that it be, in addition to, what do you, constructed in accordance with the submitted landscaping plan.
Okay.
I think...
I think that's the right, I would use that. And the only other thing I'm thinking of for both Lot B was, is the potential to add signage both on Route eighteen and Chapel Street, about warning of the, the closeness to the driveway to the edge of the street. There was conversation at our last meeting about the speed of, of the cars coming in and out of Route eighteen and the cars coming across from the development across the street. If there's a potential, we could actually get maybe some signage on, on West Chapel Street and our, and our eighteen to let people know that people coming out or something like that. Just a, a, a calming courtesy, just to help both, both the residents and the people driving the road so they know it's coming. What do you have to say?
I, I, I don't think we can put one on Route eighteen because it's a state highway, but I think we could put something on West Chapel Street because that's a town road.
So is that something that the builder would talk to the town about? Or is that the town, would the town just do it on their own?
I think the town would make us pay for the sign.
You think?
Yes, I'm almost positive.
Okay, I, I don't know, I'm asking the question, so...
Yes, and, yes, we...
Okay.
It's kind of like, sorry.
I'm just thinking, based on the conversation that it's had at the last meeting, that maybe, I know it's not perfect, but at least there's something there that alerts people what's happening in that corner.
Yes, and...
And I'm not concluding it right now, I hope this is a discussion.
Right, and I have more to present.
Okay, I apologize then.
No, 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 because the question was, do we need, did we need a special permit?
Yep.
And now that the, your decision is that we need a special permit, I was going to offer you more information as to why we think a special permit is justified.
Please continue.
Okay, but would you like me to segregate this and talk about the Bedford Street Lot and get that voted, and then do the West Chapel Street Lot since they're...
Well, you gotta remember one thing, too, it's still open to the public.
Right.
So we're not gonna vote on it right away. The other thing is, we would like to know why you think the special permit is, is needed for this and a variance is needed for the other property.
Okay.
Okay, so if you could go through...
Sure.
You know, your findings.
Yep, so I want to incorporate for the record, we did make part of that presentation two months ago.
Right.
So all that is on your record, you've got that, but that was two months ago for all of us. And you guys have had a couple of hearings in between then. So just to remind us, the transitional commercial zone, again, requires parking to be in the rear, because transitional commercial is, is a zone that's intended, I can read it. One of the purposes is to preserve the residential character of existing development along thoroughfares that are undergoing pressure for commercial development by providing the transition to more intensive but compatible uses. So in the transitional commercial zone, there are certain uses that are allowed, that is, commercial uses that are allowed as of right with no zoning permits, and there's certain residential uses that are allowed as of right, and there's others that are allowed by special permit. We could build a retail store in this property without a zoning permit. We could put a daycare center up there without a zoning permit. You could build a four-bedroom, single-family house up here without a zoning permit, put the driveways wherever you want. What we're proposing is a special, we're, we've asked for the duplex, which is a two-unit building in those footprints which we've shown you. And we demonstrated earlier that the footprints that we are showing in the buildings that we're building are consistent with the sizes that are in the neighborhood, in fact, smaller than about half of the houses in the immediate area. And I can submit that again, I have that with me. The special permit, in order to have the special permit, and the question was, do we really need a special permit? Because the bylaw says we don't. But because of that chart, Amy is saying err, err, err on the side of requiring, okay? So that being said, I think the variance we talked about before, if we're, putting it in the back creates other issues, it creates, it doesn't benefit anyone, if anything, it harms the neighbors more than us. I think there was a consensus at the last meeting that the parking out front made sense for everyone, and the variance, I think, was supported. I'm happy to answer more questions about that as we go, but I think the focus I would like to spend is the special permit, because that's now been determined to be something we need to talk about.
Well, the, the variance part is soil shape, top...
Yep, the top, okay, so the...
Topography, excuse me, and hardship. So we just hit on that?
Sure, sure.
For the variance.
So we talked, the topography, most of the property comes, goes downhill from Bedford Street. If you go down West Chapel Street or Orange Street, you're coming down Bedford Street. The same thing is true with the, with the topography of the property. The land goes down from Bedford Street, down through and down to Everett Street, which is one of the side streets. Everything slopes backward. So it's important as to what's in the backyard, because whatever's there is either gonna absorb rain or it's going to sheet it if it's pavement. So that topography would have to be either significantly adjusted or we put the parking out front and leave the grass out back. That becomes a sponge basically for rain, so you don't have drainage issues. All the drainage, the pavement is out front and doesn't get to the rear property lot. Additionally, it's just, it's right off of Route eighteen, you're in and you're out instead of trying to loop around behind the building. Having, you don't see many instances with one and two family houses where the parking is in the back of the building, out in the backyard, and it's not in the front. So this is more conducive to the Route eighteen itself, where most of the parking across the street, you know, it's in the front. It also allows us, as we mentioned earlier, we're trying to keep the same location of the curb cutting. Mr. Manning was asking that question last time. That driveway location is the same location as it's always been, because Mass Highway would have to approve if you moved it in any general direction. The driveway itself conforms as far as the required widths by our site, by our zoning bylaw, the number of parking spaces. We're required to have two and a half parking spaces for each of these buildings. We have well more than that, because we intentionally did that, because you can't park on Route eighteen, being a state highway. So we built extra parking spaces. Technically, we're supposed to have two spaces. That's not gonna work for, for a family of four in a four-bedroom house, or a family of six, whatever, or the duplex. So we have enough parking spaces for, I believe it's five or six on the, on the Bedford Street Lot. And the driveways that are on West Chapel Street, I know we're talking on Bedford Street right now, would literally fit six cars in each one of them. But back to Bedford Street. So that's part of the hardship, is the topography of that, of that property. You wanna push, keep the grass in the back and push the pavement in the front. It's just a better look, and it works better in the, the general neighborhood and tries to keep consistent with the development of the neighborhood. There's residential property to our right, which is down south in that photo there, and so it'll be residential on all sides and residential to the rear. It's a better end product if the variance is granted. If you decide that you'd rather have the backyard paved, you can just deny the variance, and we would do just that.
And you still build in the two-family?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
But the duplex, excuse me, the two, duplex, yep.
Same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so you pretty much covered everything with soil. The hardship, though, would be probably on the, on the, on the neighbors, you would say?
It is, or we would have to bring in fill and retaining walls out back if we wanted to try to level it off and all that.
Just trying to figure out the hardship.
Yeah.
All right, all right, so we covered variance.
Right.
And now let's go into the special permit.
So I submitted a memorandum, and I brought extra copies to, some paper copies. The evidence owner, and I'll read through it, for those who don't have it, I know Mary has a copy. The evidence owning bylaws authorize the issuance of a special permit after the zoning board takes into consideration the fulfillment of the following general conditions. And this is right out of our bylaw. This for, number one, the use requested is in the table of uses as a special permit. And yes, it is, is in the table of uses as a special permit. Number two, the requested use will not overload any public water, sewer, or drainage system or any other municipal system, create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair sightlines for traffic or hinder pedestrian safety to such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare. Our answer to that is there will be no overload of public water, sewer, or drainage, and no, quote, undue traffic congestion will be created by the addition of the duplex, duplex residence. Sightlines are unimpeded, the street is straight, both Route eighteen and West Ches, West Chestnut, I'm sorry, West Chapel, and the proposed residential use will not hinder pedestrian safety. The proposed use creates larger lawn areas than previous developments or other allowed developments would, and provides off-street parking, driveway parking, which exceeds our zoning minimums. Again, this is, one of the uses allowed by special permit, we believe, is a much less of an impact to the neighbors than any of the others. And I know it was questioned earlier, like, are you comparing to other uses? Yes, we are, because Mr. Goslin owns the property and wanted to see what are his options. It could be a commercially developed property, and it could have a lot more traffic in and out of there, but that's not what we're proposing, we're proposing this special permit. So do we overload water, sewer, drainage, traffic congestion? No, we don't, not with a duplex residence. The third one, any special regulations for the use set forth in this bylaw are met. Answer to that is there are no special regulations in the bylaw for this. Sometimes floodplain regulations might apply, but this is not in the floodplain zone. Number four, the requested use is desirable to the public convenience of welfare. The addition of new housing units in this residential area is a benefit to the town's housing stock. Additionally, we would assert that the proposed residential use is more beneficial to the welfare, quote-unquote, of immediate neighbors on West Chapel as compared to the effects which may arise if the same property was developed with other available as-of-right uses, as I mentioned before, such as what is allowed as a retail store, an office building, a daycare school, a hair salon, things like that. The approval of the requested special permit to allow two-family residential use on this transitional commercial lot is justified and supported for several reasons. The following arguments will apply more specifically to Lot B on West Chapel Street, given that no objection to Lot A's special permit was raised previously. First, the proposed two-family dwelling and its proposed separate driveways conform to or exceed all of the dimensional requirements of our zoning bylaws in all respects, meaning we conform to lot area requirements, side setback requirements, front setback requirements, rear setback requirements, and all frontage requirements. We either meet or exceed all of those. Second, neighbors have expressed a concern about the proposal to add the dwellings driveways to this portion of West Chapel Street. Our zoning bylaws require the driveways to be located within the lot's street frontage under one seventy-five fourteen, and they further require that they be located to the side of the new residences under one seventy-five forty B. By scale, the closest edge of the westernmost driveway is about fifty feet from the curb line of Bedford Street, and the other driveway is approximately a hundred and fifteen feet away. Third, notably, there are no other driveways on the other side of the West Chapels, of this West Chapel Street Lot, which would conflict with any turning movements to or from the proposed driveways on Lot B. So specifically, across the street from our driveways, there are no other driveways. The house at four West Chapel Street, which is on the corner of West Chapel and Bedford Street, their driveway is on Bedford Street.
It's a large lot, correct?
It's a large lot, it has a little retaining wall in the front, but there is no, they're not gonna be pulling out of a driveway across the street when we're pulling out, so that benefits us and everyone else as far as there's no safety issue created there by driveways being directly across the street from each other. That's something the board can note in support of the special permit. Also, neighbors have noted that some drivers use West Chapel Street as a cut-through similar to other side streets that are connected to Route eighteen on one end and Washington Street or other streets. You know, the people cut through Bedford, through West Chapel to get from Bedford to Washington Street, and there's a couple of other streets where that, that also happens. also happens. Also, like Char Avenue, different, different ones where people use it as cut-throughs. However, it's important to note, the construction of the proposed duplex dwelling will not cause any increase in volume or any increase in speed of any cut-through traffic which may exist, nor will it decrease it. And thus, the placement of the duplex's driveways on West Chapel Street and any alleged effect on street traffic cannot be a reason to deny this requested special permit. Before what I'm saying, if we put a driveway on West Chapel Street, that's not going to say more people are going to use West Chapel Street. It's not going to tell, say they're going to come faster down West Chapel Street. It's not going to say they're going to come slower down West Chapel Street. The driveway being added, it does not change the problem that exists. We acknowledge that that's an issue with all the side streets on Route 18 especially, but putting a driveway there, our driveway that we're allowed to put per the zoning bylaw, does not exacerbate that problem. So, it's important for the board to recognize that it's not a reason to deny the special permit. The proposed locations of the driveways conform to all of our zoning requirements. We acknowledge the neighbors' concerns that a driver exiting Lot B's driveway will need to be careful of other drivers returning on West Chapel Street from Route 18, but the 50-foot separation should be sufficient for a turning vehicle to slow down or stop if needed. Shorter side street separation distances already exist in the area. On the opposite end of West Chapel Street at Washington Street, there's a driveway that is located approximately 37 feet from Washington Street's curb line. If you instead want to focus directly on Route 18, I've attached aerial photos of other side street intersections with Route 18, which contain side street driveway locations which are less than the 50 feet that we are proposing. There's, I have an aerial photo there of the cross-section at Char Avenue, and also at Nile Street, where they're less than what we're proposing, and there haven't been issues in those areas. Our zoning bylaw requires multifamily and commercial driveways be at least 75 feet away from the intersection under 17547B2C. The intent of that bylaw is to require a minimum separation of more heavily-traveled driveways from roadway intersections. So commercial and multifamilies have to be 75 feet away. However, it's important to note that this same bylaw exempts one- and two-family uses from the 75-foot requirement, and thus, that bylaw itself supports that proposition that any alleged traffic hazards to be created by the proposed duplex dwelling on Lot B would be minimal or negligible, and will not create undue traffic congestion, which is one of the factors you need to show, or a traffic hazard which would justify the denial of the requested special permit. So the bylaw itself recognizes that a one-family, a two-family does not require a driveway to be 75 feet or any specific distance from the intersection because of the small volume of traffic that would be generated with such a use. We also researched the Abbott and Police Department's accident reports over the last two years to determine if any accidents occurred on West Chapel Street, which may have involved residents pulling into or out of their driveways. There were none reported. There was an accident in December 2022 at 212 Bedford Street, that's the, the apartment complex on the other side of, yeah, Avanna or whatever they're calling it now, Avalon, they keep changing it. All right. That was, uh, in, uh, sorry, an accident with the, at the intersection of the driveway in Bedford Street. There was also a similar accident at the exact same issue, at the exact same area in September of 2023, and there was one accident in the intersection of Washington Street and West Chapel Street on the other end. But there were no accidents on West Chapel Street involving someone backing out of a driveway. There were no personal injuries reported on any of those accidents that I just noted. And I just, I'm going to just submit that police report to the, for the record right there. Thank you. One of the purposes of the Transitional Commercial District, as I read before, under 17540, is to, quote, "preserve the residential character of existing development along thoroughfares that are undergoing pressure for commercial development by providing for the transition to more intensive but compatible uses," such as duplex dwelling next to a single-family dwelling. More intensive but compatible. Under the table of uses, 17521, there are several types of zoning, of commercial businesses which could be located in the property without the need, as I mentioned earlier. The applicant believes that his proposed duplex dwelling will be more compatible with the abutting residential homes in this specific location, and we note that the sizes of the lots to be created will be comparable or larger than most all of the other nearby residential lots in West Chapel Street. So for all of those above reasons, and for the reasons we've previously prevented, presented in our submitted materials, in our hearing testimony two months ago, Mr. Goslin respectfully requested the Zoning Board of Appeals grant the zoning relief requested in our application. Again, it'll be the variance for the parking location in, on the Bedford Street lot, and a special permit on each lot to allow the duplex use as, excuse me, as proposed. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Goslin is also here, but I know it's frustrating when there's additions to a neighborhood, something new, and we, and Steve has been doing business in Abington for quite some time, he has an office in Abington, owns quite a few properties in Abington. If you're familiar with Steve, he maintains his properties to a very high level, I think the board can acknowledge that themselves. We met many times to try to figure out what would be the best design and try to mitigate any sort of issues that developing this property would do. And we firmly believe that this is good. Again, I mentioned earlier, we're not required to have our driveways come that far off of West Chapel Street, but we're doing that intentionally to allow for more off-street parking. Our driveways are more than 40 feet deep, and they're 20 feet wide, that's the maximum you can have, is 20 feet wide. So you can literally park, can stack three cars next to three cars on each of those two driveways. So each unit would have six off-street parking spaces, which I would suggest is probably more than most other driveways in the area, because a lot of the, all of the driveways are older. Again, we already have plenty of parking in the, on the Bedford Street side for similar reasons. Snow removal is not an issue. Like every other driveway, the plow comes onto your property and it pushes it to the back of your driveway. We don't push snow onto the, onto the street, it's illegal to do that. Nobody can do that. So we would push everything onto our property, and there's plenty of room just to do that. We have tried to maintain, we've put the dwelling specifically on West Chapel Street, tried to pull it as far over, away from Mr. Libby's house, to try to have as much greenery between us, and we have, we pulled the house as back as far as we could from West Chapel to have as big of a front lawn as we could reasonably create. And again, the house footprint itself is not anything larger than what you're going to see, in fact, it is smaller, as I mentioned, than most, and I will submit a breakdown, a chart of that, for the record.
Just refresh our memories, um, how many bedrooms are, um?
Two in each.
Two in each?
This is the, the breakdown. I submitted, I don't recall if I submitted this last time, so I just updated and reprinted this. This is really not, doesn't retain too much of this special permit, but I just wanted to, to provide kind of doc, to document that we're not overbuilding here. We have a lot of green space on this property. In the transitional commercial zone, there is no limit to how much pavement we have. It's just reasonable. We, again, tried, have tried to do something that we think will be attractive, and yet we'll allow plenty of off-street parking, because nowadays, when we built houses back in the 70s, mom and dad were lucky if they each had a car. Nowadays, every teenager has their own car, there's three, four cars. So, you know, we try to create it so that there's plenty of spacing, or if a guest comes, they don't park on the street, they can park in our, in our parking areas.
Could you, could you explain the transitional commercial zone again, just, just to-
Sure.
What's allowed in it?
There are certain uses that are allowed as of right because they're considered to be low-impact. Some might disagree. A retail store is allowed as of right.
Okay.
Okay? There's a lot of in-and-out on a retail store, they're open till 11:00 and 12:00 at night, some people wouldn't like that, but it's allowed. A daycare, same thing, a lot of traffic, there's one-
Yeah, right up the street, yes.
Um, they're very popular, but we're not proposing that.
Right.
For the others I mentioned, I mean, I know you can sell gravestones as one of them, but that's not really a big business in Abington, we, I already have one. And, well, I can bring out the whole use chart if you'd like.
Uh, just, just one more. Solidify that.
It's just, the duplex is limited to two bedrooms in each, so four total bedrooms. It's, it's not going to be anything-
No, well, it's not overcrowding it.
Right, right. And so really, I think the big issue was the traffic concerns on West Chapel Street, because we know that sewer water and drainage is not an issue. So, as we've indicated, one of the biggest things to note is there's nothing across the street that would interfere or, or conflict with any turning maneuvers coming in or out of our property. I know there was a concern that it might be headlights shining on the house at 4, at the corner, at 4 West Chapel Street. With all due respect, that wouldn't happen, because their house is located tight to the corner of Bedford Street, and it's also elevated, because as she mentioned, she's on ledge over there. Our driveways do not line up with their house, our driveways would be lower than their house, so that, that wouldn't be an issue. Plus, when you pull in our driveway, you're normally not backing in, you're pulling in. So I don't think that's going, going to be much of a concern. We're willing to work with neighbors with any sort of reasonable request, that's Ben Steve's modus operandi for previous projects, and it's something that we acknowledge that there are problems with people speeding down West Chapel Street. And I know this board has heard that from many other neighbors on different streets. It's a reality that a lot of us have to, I don't want to say we have to live with it, because we shouldn't have to live with it, but this special permit, the granting of the special permit does not change that fact, and a denial of it does not make it any better. It's not fair to Mr. Goslin to blame that issue on him as a denial of the special permit. He conforms to all of the reasons why the just, the special permit can be approved and should be approved, and we don't have any dimensional issues whatsoever on West Ch- Chestnut, uh, West Chapel, I'm sorry. He conforms in all regards to the zoning bylaw.
I think I touched on this last meeting, but, so, the biggest issue is people coming out of, obviously, Lot B and taking a left where you have traffic coming down 18. You have, you know, the triangular Lot B that almost, I mean, the driveways almost connect, why couldn't you have an entrance-only driveway on Lot B and then feed the, the exit onto 18 and have a right away over Lot A?
Zoning bylaws do not allow a driveway to cross over another, unless you get a variance for that also. We did talk, you know, we actually looked at this, one way to do this would be to create a condominium, one big lot with either a larger building or multiple buildings and have a driveway that's now, you know, goes in one way, comes out another way. We're not looking to build a lot of units here. We, he wants to keep it down and limit it to the duplex, so that it's a minimal impact. It's on Route 18, I mean, honestly, a multifamily or commercial would fit there. It's allowed, the multifamily with a special permit, but we're not asking for that.
Okay. And now, you already touched on the other concern that I had, the, I think, the house at 4 West Chapel indicated that there'd be, or they felt there'd be similar penetration. I don't know if you had a chance to discuss any type of privacy hedges or anything like that, potential?
About the, the headlight glare?
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, if you, if you actually map it out, I don't think that's going to be an issue, and if you, if it was an issue, I think the privacy edge would have to be on their property, if, if there was light shining that way. I mean, we're only going to have standard residential lights on the building, you know, a light outside the door like everyone else's house. So there's no, should be any lights shining in their direction.
Okay. And what about any more information about whether or not you need to do blasting?
No, you, you won't know that until you start digging. I mean, like I mentioned before, Steve doesn't want to do blasting either, it's very expensive, and the woman who spoke about it is right, if there is blasting, there's a whole thing you have to do to the building, fire department, you have to survey the, uh, neighboring houses, take videos, basically do a before and after, so you can prove whatever damage was caused by it. Not something that we want to get into, and hopefully, you know, we don't have to go down deep, to, there was a house on this property before, so there is, there is some foundation there.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Riley? No. Would anyone from the audience like to come up and speak on this issue?
Can I, um, just ask, did, did, were you guys able to see the memorandum? I know you got it potentially late.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to, again, note the attachments I had to it.
Just right here.
Yeah, because I think sometimes pictures speak a thousand words.
Yeah, I did, those pictures, yeah.
I'm a visual artist, so I like to share that.
You got it all together.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, um, please let us know your name and address.
My name is Carolyn Belvis, I live at 112 Everett Street. I appreciate what he's doing, for the things that we've gone through before, this is way It's just that, the driveway, to say it's not going to be impeded, I live on the corner of Everett and West Chapel, and I work in my basement. There's many times where I can look out the window and I see cars backed up all the way to the corner. Like, that driveway right there, if two or three cars are sitting there waiting to take a left, that person's not going to be able to pull out of their driveway. And most of the time, there's quite a few cars sitting there waiting, because it's really hard to get out onto 18.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough area right there.
Yeah, it's, it's just, there's always a lot of cars sitting there waiting, and so to say it's not going to be impeded, I think, is naive to think that there's not going to be cars, I mean, that you're talking 50 feet away, that's me, three cars there, and then they would be impeding the driveway, so. I don't know if, like, he could push the driveways together in the middle, I know, like, that's parking in the front, but that would move it away from the property, it would move it away from the street, like, maybe that's a, a way to find common ground, but I, I do think it's dangerous, that area is very dangerous, and to have it that close, I think, is going to cause some issues, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak on this topic? All right, entertain a motion to close the public part of this thing.
Hold on, hold on. I didn't know she was coming up, sorry about that. They were pushing each other.
I'm gathering the Dallas, I have a 237 Bedford Street, which is on the other side of West Chapel.
Yep.
And, there could be signage, if there are any drivers, if they need to take a right turn, so they won't get hit by the people coming around or from a point at Abington, where there's a lot of, not much turning spot at the end of West Chapel. I was wanting to mention the, um, the barrier that, while Manny mentioned, the barrier hedges. I know how far the salt's thrown on Route 18, and you won't be able to grow anything at, anywhere near even a sidewalk, or it's, it comes halfway to our driveway, though we have lots of things out front, almost from the salt, so I don't know how long they would last out front.
The purpose is pretty high.
Okay. I've lost notes, I was just saying, and there's one other thing, um, with the lighting on the driveways, is there, like, are you putting lights in to shine into the driveways of lots? Okay. Just regular old some driveway. Okay, all right, that was it.
Thank you very much. Trying not to hurry so much this time. Would anyone else like to come up and speak?
You're doing a good job.
My name is Jan Siri, I'm at 104 Everett Street. Coming into tonight feeling pretty much defeated, like this is a done deal anyway, I realize that the board probably has their arm twisted because of all the dots being dotted and all the Ts being crossed. My opinion, I still don't think that makes it right. My concern is not with the Bedford Street lot, my concern is with the West Chapel Street lot, and it's not so much, although there are concerns, with regards to people leaving West Chapel to get onto Route 18, my concern, as I voiced before, is the people that are whipping around that corner or from across the street onto West Chapel Street. I also disagree that this is not impactful in any way. We're talking about four times as many homes as was there previously. Another concern that was that while there is obviously something dug into the ground for, on the Bedford Street side, when it comes to actually putting a new building on the West Chapel Street side, that was not, there's no, there was no pre-existing building there before, so we don't know what they're going to find when they try to build there. And mostly, my concern is for my neighbors, the Libbys, and how their quality of life will be impacted by this. That's my main concern. They're not here tonight. They're not here tonight. I don't know why. I know they've been in conversations. Don't know what the result of that was or why they're not here. But by saying that it, putting a dwelling there with a drive, two driveways is not impactful. I also feel badly for the people that are going to live in that home because when they do try to exit, it's the traffic off of 18 and plowing across the street from the point of Abington that's going to endanger their lives. So that's...
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Okay. But entertain a motion to close the public part of the hearing. Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I have one question. Mr. Riley, if you find that you can't, you may have to blast or whatever, is there any chance that you won't go with the basement that you?
There's actually been many test pits down on the property where I'm locating the project that's not in the area.
I'm sorry, what?
There's been many test pits down on the property by the previous applicant before I purchased, so I'm pretty confident.
That the basements will be put in?
I'm not going to be blasting.
Oh, you are or you're not?
I'm not. I don't see, I don't see that, no.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. Just to make sure.
You know, I'm obviously going to do something that's going to cost me the worst.
Right, exactly. So no basements?
Oh, no. I'm going to put a basement.
Okay.
But no blasting?
No blasting.
My understanding, what he said is that there's been test drilling there before?
There's been a lot of test pits done from the previous applicant doing a different development.
Okay.
So I don't anticipate.
So you plan not to blast?
I can't say I may not do that.
Okay, all right. So you will be putting basements in, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. That's what I'm asking.
All right. Board discussion about this?
I'd like to hear what the building department needs to say if anything.
As the zoning enforcement agent, the applicant has met all the criteria of the zoning by law. And from that standpoint, that's my bible. So, I mean, there's not much else I can say as for the variance portion. That would be...
I'm sorry.
Sorry. From a zoning standpoint, the applicants met all the zoning bylaws, measurements, regulations. The variance is at the discretion of the zoning board, obviously, but that is my, that's my guideline, right? So that's my jurisdiction, so there's not much else I can say.
Okay, I just was wondering if you had anything to add?
Yeah.
Thank you. Other discussion?
I feel, I'll be honest with you, I feel the same way that the neighborhood feels, but, but then I look at all what Mr. Riley's brought to us and what the town lawyer has said to us and, and I look at the, I look at the less they're putting on there, not the more. 18 is very dangerous and the side street's very dangerous, but Mr. Riley does bring up the pictures of such other streets in the neighborhood, the different areas off 18 that have same situations. And I feel for the, I do feel for the neighborhood, but it seems like all the ducks are kind of in a row. So, I mean, how do you guys feel about it?
Similarly, I mean, I think it would be nice to encourage the people, assuming this would get approved, you know, we still have to determine, but if the driveway closest to 18 off, on...
Lot Chapel?
West Chapel Street, I'd encourage them to only turn right out of their driveway because, you know, there's traffic, but you can't really make them do that.
No, no. And the applicant owns the property now and, I mean, they probably could put storefronts in there or something to that matter.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like the, you know, the, I don't think anyone would probably put in a, a large single-family home there with a driveway on 18 and nothing else. I mean, it just seems like people are going to have difficulty getting out of it.
We do understand what the neighborhood is saying. I mean, I drove by, I understand.
Yep.
But going by the, the bylaws and what Amy has said and the presentation.
You can't deny something just because we have to have...
We have a bad feeling about it.
Well, you know, if they meet the, the requirements for, to meet a special permit, we can't deny it for, you know, just because we want to, you know, kind of...
What, what do you say?
I'm only going to say what I know. And I know the fact that is if, meeting all the guidelines is meeting all the guidelines. And if the board was about to say no and this went to the state, if you appeal to the state, the state's going to come back and say they met all the guidelines. And by the way, all the regulations you want installed, sorry, you're on your own now.
Right.
The bill to know, and I know you're quality building, I don't, I'm not questioning anything you say at all. I, I know you're a good builder and I know you maintain your property. But if the state overrules this decision, if we validate it, they, they can give him carte blanche to do whatever.
Right.
And I don't want to see whatever happen. What we were, what we were dealing with 11 months ago was an 11-unit, four-story complex in this, in this lot.
Right.
So I don't want to deal with that either.
Right.
So I'm, I, I can, living in the neighborhood, I live on Orange Street, I understand the neighborhood and their concerns, and I have the same concerns, but the least of, in the best of both worlds, this is the least and best of both worlds. And I, I would, I would not be a buyer of the property on West Chapel Street. I don't know if I'd be the buyer on Bedford Street, but I know that, I know whoever gets it's going to live in quality. I know he doesn't build bad stuff. He builds good stuff, so. And he maintains his property. True to Mr. Riley's statement earlier, he has a very good reputation of doing very well in all of his locations.
That's been proven.
And, and so I would say that it, you may say the ducks are all in order, you may say that, it, it, the truth be, be told is, is that he meets the requirements of a property owner to develop this land and he's trying to do it to the best of his ability within the limits he's got to play with. And I think he's proposed the best thing he could do for what he can build on this property. And I, I truly believe that if, if the hedgerow dies because it gets snow, he'll replace the hedgerow. I just don't doubt it. I just think he will do it. So I apologize for that, but I just don't want to see this get denied because the board doesn't want to approve it and then have the state come back and say, "Sorry, he passed everything he needed to do. He can build whatever he wants." And we have nothing to say about it.
You know, if we denied the variance on Lot A, that's in our discretion.
Yes. The variance is a, is a parking variance.
Right.
If he was, if we're going to make him throw in the back of the property, no offense to anybody here, I don't want it in the back of the property.
I agree.
Right? I don't, I don't want the light shining downhill. I don't want the light shining sideways.
I want the drainage to be downhill.
But I want the drainage to cover by the grass. The grass will absorb the water that's necessary to absorb. You put all the parking back there, no matter what he does with drainage, you're going to have issues and I don't want to deal with those issues.
Right. So...
So I would suggest...
So can we just get, did you want to add anything? Are you good?
Yep, I'm good.
I just want to make sure you get his opinion.
I was going to suggest that we, we cover Lot A first, the special permit, then the variance, and then go to the special permit on Lot B. Is that okay?
Well, let's just make sure we have that right. Do you have that correct?
To vote on the special permit and then...
The special permit is for...
For Lot A and Lot B.
Lot A and Lot B.
Okay.
Okay, so, we want to make sure we get that correct.
Right, right. So there's a vote for Lot A and Lot B for a special permit and then there's a vote for a variance on Lot A?
Correct. We want to make sure we get that correct.
Okay.
Because we don't want to, if it's passed or...
Any other discussion on this from the board?
No, I think we've beaten this up pretty much.
Yeah, I think so too.
I think we have expressed our, we're being honest. We're not a board that's going to say, "Hey, yeah, sure." No. We, we're being honest. That's the way we like to do this.
The only thing I would add is on Lot A, on the variance, I think you wanted to include language that it'd be constructed in accordance with the submitted landscape plan?
I have that right. Do you really?
Yeah.
I have the landscape plan right there.
Let's hit the, the special permits first then somebody could make a motion about
On the petition of Gosling Home Builders LLC special permit under 175-21A, Section 2, to allow for a duplex dwelling on Lot A and Lot B, Lot A on Bedford Street and Lot B on West Chapel Street, I vote that the board approves the request for a special permit.
And I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we do the variance.
On the issue of petition of Gosling Home Builders LLC for a variance under 175-40B, Section 1, to allow for a driveway parking in the front yard lot of the property located at 207 Bedford Street on the assessors map, 23 Lot 25 in the transition commision zone, and include the landscape...
Constructed in accordance with the submitted landscape plan?
Thank you. With the construction in accordance with the landscape plan submitted as part of the app, I vote that we approve the variance.
All right. Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
I'm sorry to be cowed in by. Just to let you know that you can appeal this. You have the right to appeal, correct?
From 20, from, after the decision letter is done, there will be a 20-day appeal period.
Do you have that? If you need to talk to the building department, you can if you wish to appeal. Thank you very much, Gregor, for coming out.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the continued hearing petition of Kristen Wilson for a variance under Section 1 of 175-21A2. As stated in the application, there are no plans to alter the structure. A request is being submitted to approve existing structure from a one-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling. The property is located at 152 Hancock Street on Assessors Map 29, Lot 71 in the residential R40 zone. Come up and tell us your name and address and why you're here.
Good evening. My name's Kristen Wilson. I'm the owner of 152 Hancock Street in Abington. I purchased the home in 2018, July of 2018, and it, at that time, I provided information in those packets for how the house was advertised at that point. It was advertised as an in-law retreat to me. So it was purchased with it having an in-law on it. It came to light this year as to what the requirements are in the town of Abington for in-law apartments I was unaware of. So I'm here tonight to make corrections to the property. It has a full side to the house. Nothing has been changed with that since I moved in. I have no intentions of changing anything with the house. And again, I provided quite a few pictures of the property.
It's huge.
The area in question is on the left-hand side above the garage. And as of right now, it's, it's more, it was purchased with my previous marriage and my mother-in-law was up there.
Okay.
So it was purchased with the intent of having family up there. That's how it has been. But my concerns is moving forward, making sure that the house is correctly zoned as to what it should be moving forward, so there's no questions on it.
I'm sorry, can you clarify? So it wasn't, there was never a legal in-law there or would we see it should?
I, I think there's been a question on what the, it's, it's, as of right now, it's an extension of my house.
Yep.
And when you bought it, it was there, correct?
It was, oh, correct, yes. I am not, this was not added.
Advertised as an in-law, as a legal in-law?
It was advertised as an in-law retreat.
Okay, all right.
Truly.
Do we have records on that by insurance?
We do have record, we do have records. So back in 1984, addition and breezeway were added. So what happens then when something like this is built? Normally, the protocol would be, it's technically a two-family because, because there was no in-law until February of 2005. The former owners, some of them actually did in-law affidavits prior to my, prior to my coming, so I never, so until I got into this, I sent, I sent Ms. Wilson a letter saying, "It has come to my attention." She immediately got on it, came, came to the building department and wanted to remediate things. And I said, "Unfortunately, because of the use of it," I said, "I think it's best that you come forward to the board to bring it back to the two-family status that you want it to be because the advertising for the property was misleading." And it hasn't been till probably the last couple of years that when a house is advertised with an in-law, if we find it disturbing or, or miscommunicated, we will reach out to the, the owner and say, "This is not, you know, this is not how it should be listed," you know?
And is there separate utilities and water?
As of right now, everything is all in one. There's separate entrances, so there's...
Wouldn't that be a requirement for...
There would be a requirement that you would have to separate the utility, like two meters.
Correct.
The structure itself is set up with a, a full fire protection wall, separation wall, but the utilities are as of one, so to completely legalize it, you'd have to have separate meters. In the common area, that might be in the middle there.
So if we consider doing this, we have to add language separating the utilities?
To become code compliant.
So why, I'm sorry.
So for all intents and purposes, it's unfortunate that Ms. Wilson had to come up here because it should have been, for all intents and purposes, a grandfathered two-family, but permits, affidavits, things just got messed up. Her, the realtor who listed this, when she purchased it, everything got completely...
Listed wrong.
Yeah.
Okay, what were you guys saying?
If we, if we divide the property as a two-family, does the house on the way with all the grass have to have a driveway or will they do a shared driveway?
You can do a shared driveway.
Shared driveway.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the, so the one parking garage in the addition of the second unit, unit B on the left would go with that unit B, right?
Correct.
They'd have their own parking garage? And they're not required to have a separate driveway for Unit A on the right-hand side of the side of the grass?
Correct.
Okay.
You want to say something?
I mean, those are kind of my questions is why isn't this, why aren't we converting this into just a single-family with an in-law as opposed to a two-family?
Did you want to answer that one?
With the, the in-law...
Because you don't have an in-law right now. That's what, that's what I gathered, right? You don't have an in-law right now. Do you want to get behind the mic so the people can hear?
And, and to note with the parking in front of the home?
Yeah.
There, as of right now, there is parking for approximately comfortably without any blocking at all for 12 cars.
Oh, wow.
It's that the house is set quite far back from the street, about 100 yards from Hancock Street. It's set behind quite a few properties, so my property, it's close to two acres. It runs behind three to four homes on Hancock Street.
I will say the pictures don't do that justice.
I was going to say.
Extremely, yeah.
I think it's 1.8 acres is what the house is on.
So are there any other two families or in-laws in that neighborhood?
Yeah, on Hancock, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
With a change in, for accessory dwelling units, would this be more properly an accessory dwelling unit as of next February because of that, that's what the state is doing?
On February 2nd, in my opinion, this would then become something that Ms. Wilson can probably bring before the building department as a single-family home with an ADU.
Right.
And there would not be an issue whatsoever.
Right.
Because she technically needs...
Even with the utilities?
She technically needs, yeah, with the separate utility, those are...
Still, there's a separate, still remains that it needs to be...
So no matter what, she has to just, either it's a duplex or later an accessory dwelling unit, she has to separate the utilities. And so the only other use she can have right now is an in-law with an affidavit and that isn't the case.
Not necessary, so, yeah.
And that's where the confusion came through, is that that was not, that was not translated to me at the purchase, to the time of purchase. So again, I'm before you tonight trying to correct unforeseen issue that I have.
I'll say, it is huge.
The breezeway addition that was added afterwards, closing of the breezeway, that goes with Unit B, right?
I included numerous pictures of the interior of the house. So there is a picture of my living room. That is the breezeway.
Oh, okay.
So there is a sunken living room that is actually seen, if you see the porch where the bikes are.
Is it this one?
Correct, yes. So that's the breezeway.
I just didn't know which unit got that.
So you could park in front of that, and that'd be your parking.
So the entrance, so this is, these are the interior pictures that were, as it was advertised when I purchased it. So this is the room you walk into as you're coming up that front porch. So that doorway where those bikes were, come into this room. So this is part of the main house.
So I'm going to call Unit A on the left, so.
Yeah, so Unit A is the larger unit.
Yeah.
And then on the left-hand side, there's a set of stairs.
I'm sorry.
This is coming up, again, this was the kitchen as it was when I purchased it. That's coming up through where that breezeway was.
Okay.
So the breezeway as it's on paper is very different from as it stands.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Any bedrooms in the in-law?
So upstairs, there's a, I believe I put a picture of the kitchen for the in-laws, the dark wood.
Who gets the pool?
That's the backyard.
There's the.
So this is the layout of upstairs. There's a kitchen you can walk into, a little dining area, the living room area, and then a single bedroom.
If you go back to the main photo, where does the entrance door to go up to the second unit, is on the far left?
Left-hand side of the garage.
Right, that is the entrance.
That is the main unit, yes.
Then you have two exits.
Right there.
Yeah, so on to the left, there's an entrance right there that goes through the garage up to the unit upstairs. To the left of the building, there's a second set of stairs there that goes up to the, there's an entrance on the side of, on the left.
So are there two ways, is there a way, two ways out, or just one?
There's multiple ways out. There's a door on the, so inside of the garage.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
They have the stairs that come down there.
Okay.
There's an exit out the back of the garage.
All right, so there's more than one exit out of the.
I can confirm that there's two, I did the inscription there.
Okay. Very good.
Do you have immediate plans to rent the side unit?
So as of now, it's just been family in there.
Okay.
And again, personally, I just, I want family in my life, you know. But again, I'm just trying to, I was not aware of that there was a discrepancy in the property when I purchased it. So I'm trying to correct everything moving forward, so when I go to sell it at some point, then there's corrections made and there isn't a discrepancy with that or for anybody moving forward. I don't want them to have to come up and correct this.
Right, right, great.
I mean, my, because my just question or concern is it's kind of had a checkered past in the sense that it should have been an in-law, or it should have been a two-family, which never happened, and then it's really now an in-law, which it isn't, and now we have the accessory units coming up, which it could be. So is, are we better just waiting and trying to have it be what it should be as opposed to calling it a two-family with a variance in a zone that doesn't allow two families, trying to sort of wedge it in there as opposed to just waiting and doing a clean slate when we have something that it legally is, if that makes sense?
My question is, has the state really ratified and put their stamp on that? Are there more changes coming from the state? Is it often?
Well, I think that's the reason why we're here tonight, is because it suggested that
you don't know the delay.
In our enforcement efforts through the town, that this property owner was pretty willing to work with us and to get it right. And I think, again, you know, once they do complete the verbiage, it'll be a matter of right that she'll be able to get this unit legalized. I mean, the intent use has been used for years and years and years.
Well, let's look at a variance. Well, let's look at the hardship. There's definitely hardship here, right? Shape of the lot, well, yeah, all right, we're in Abington. Soil that doesn't really, doesn't really hit it, but, I mean, technically, yes. She's, the hardship right there alone is enough for a variance. That's my opinion.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm just bringing that out because there's that big word variance again, so just, you know, bringing it out to everybody. Any questions on that, or any thoughts on that variance part?
Well, I was going to see if there's anybody else in the audience who wants to speak on this issue before we get to that. So we should close the, unless we have more questions for her, we should close the public part of the meeting and then enter the discussion. So will someone make a motion to, if no one's going to come up, we should make a motion to close the public part of the meeting.
Well, again, now, is there anybody here wanting to speak on this?
Saw lots of.
There we go.
There you go.
Motion to close the open portion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion, you know, I think that we should approve this, and if she later decides she wants to make it an accessory dwelling unit instead, it would be, we have to come back to us, but it would be pretty much the same thing. This seems like an obvious thing for us to approve.
Right. Especially with the history behind it, and also there is a hardship here for you. I mean, if you have someone lined up in the near future and you want to get them in there. And now, again, we have to mention that the utilities have to be separated.
Correct. Still subject to code compliance.
Subject to any requirements by the building inspector.
Yeah.
Right, is that good?
Yep.
Somebody want to make a motion then?
Everyone, you good?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion on the continued hearing from petitioner Kristen Wilson on a variance under 175-21A2. As stated in the application, there are no, there are no plans to alter the structure. The request is being submitted to approve the existing structure from one family to a two-family. The property is located at 152 Hancock Street on assessors map 29, Lot 71, in the residential 40, R40 zone, as long as it follows the code requirements of our current building department. I think we should also add that this is, because what it's, how it's written here does, there's no, we're granting a variance, right? Is that what I understood?
We're granting the variance.
We're granting a variance.
Yep.
Okay, there is a variance, okay. Just want to make sure we got that clear.
So definitely got to grant the variance under 175-21A2.
Right, I just want to make sure we have that locked down. And then a second for the motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with everything. Thank you. Thank you for coming out and clearing it up.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the petition by Signs by J. for waivers under Section 175-58.3.1. The property is owned by Ebenezer Baptist Church and is represented by its president, Reverend Carl B. Thompson. The property is located at 30 Central Street, Abington, located on assessors map 40, Lot 41, in the residential R30 zone. Please let us know who you are and your address.
My name is Pam Gigello. I'm representing Ebenezer Church from Signs by J. at 110 East Street in Dorchester.
Okay.
We are here today for a waiver for adding an additional sign to the church that is currently being renovated. This church is, has an entryway to the left of the building. It's 180 feet long. We're asking for the sign for the architect's renderings to add that to the property. Pretty cut and dry. The left side is blocked by, it's an illuminated sign, the left side is blocked by shrubbery and trees. The nearest neighbor, there's three across the street that are directly across from the building. They range from 150 feet away to 250 feet away or further. And the parking lot on the right separates the neighbor on the right-hand side.
Can I ask sort of a baseline question to the building department?
Yes.
Is this not covered by the Dover Amendment?
It is not from the sense that the Dover Amendment covers the fact that the property in a residential can be a place of assembly. However, now comes the additional things that are on the property. Electronic sign is not waiver, a waiver, it's a special permit, so they had to come up for a special permit for the electronic sign. And then a sign on the structure, one sign on the structure and one sign as like a pylon or electronic sign is permissible. This type of structure that they're putting on requires a waiver. And the reason for the waiver is unlike before, before this zoning by law passed, it would have to have been a variance. By doing the waiver, should the church move on to a different location, that structure would be removed with the waiver.
Okay.
Because the waiver is only good, is only good with the applicant.
Okay.
And it would be moved without any variance issues or anything of that nature.
Is there a sign there now in the front?
There is not.
There's no signs at all already?
There's not, no sign in the front.
There's a sign right next to the road.
There is a sign on the road.
There is a ground sign in the front.
There's the electronic sign.
Nothing on the, I think they mean on the structure, yeah. There's nothing on the facade.
Nothing on the structure, but.
Correct.
The other side, are they going for permits for that?
That has already been permitted.
That's already.
I was going to say, I thought we already did this.
This is already permitted.
Okay, the one on the front.
Did that last year.
Yeah, right, I remember, okay.
And then anything extra is.
That's what I was asking. I'm trying to think of, it looks familiar. I was just wondering why it's being, it's in here.
So if we, if we would choose to grant the waiver, the conditions of the waiver are already in the town bylaws, I presume, that would make them take down the sign if they leave?
Correct.
So we don't have to mention it in our?
No. And it's not a unanimous vote, it's a majority vote, so it's a two out of three that's required.
Okay, is this, is this.
And, yeah, so it protects the town and it from all the variances that were being issued for sign permits way back when. And I can name some of them, that's just, it's, it's not a good thing to turn entire property, you know, into conforming to non-conforming due to a use. So the waivers definitely help establishments like a church or a restaurant that wants an electronic sign and then has extra designs, and then when they leave, it comes down.
Right. Okay.
So we've already granted the one on the front, I do remember that, it's been a while.
Yeah.
Well, they've been doing a lot of construction.
Right.
And. So this is obviously a lighted sign.
Halo illuminated, yes.
It's a fairly large sign from what I could tell, like 20 feet long or something?
Yes, well, generally, the height of the letters is based on the visibility. So for example, the height of that letter is visible from 300 feet typically, which is the length of the road. It's pretty, it's set pretty far back. It's going to draw attention to that left side where the carport is. That's the main entrance. There's a lot of parking in that area on both sides of the building, so we want to kind of direct people to that side.
Right.
And are there hours that you're going to have it illuminated, or?
Yeah, I think there was a requirement that we would put it on a time clock, so we would shut it off from, I don't know if it was 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM till 6:00 AM type thing.
Right, we have that same thing with the.
With the electronic.
Andrew.
Yeah, we will match that.
I was going to look at 175-58, Section 4, and require that we limit the lighted liability up to 10:00 PM, and no light after 10:00 PM until 6:00 AM.
Is that what we have?
Any other ones going to utilize that?
Okay.
It mirrors that street sign that was down there.
Only for the benefit of the.
The neighborhood.
The neighborhood.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Do we have any more questions for her?
Thank you.
Anybody have any more questions for her?
Well, just trying to see how high this really is. Do we have any pictures for the?
So between the letters and the, if Ebenezer and the Baptist Church, you're talking about 50 inches, give or take, depending on the spacing between the Ebenezer and the Baptist Church. Ebenezer's 33 inches, the Baptist Church is like 12.
And it's 20 feet long minus the cross, because the cross is going to be lifted?
Correct, the cross is separate, and we're kind of looking at that as it's a decoration for the church.
Is it just going to be like one, one color or varying colors?
Yeah, so no, it's going to be one color, and I'll show you, I'd like to just submit like a sample to give you an idea.
And if this passes, this would be the last sign, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, you really signed out on this one, I think.
Yeah.
If it passes.
So it's typical something, something like that. It's just the halo illumination. And we can also do that too, so that we can play with the lumens and make them more like daylight versus warm or whatnot. So we can, you know, keep it so that it's more subtle.
Okay.
So just to let the board know, in measurement-wise for the cross, it's 65.76 inches by 174 inches, which is 79.4 square feet.
Yeah, it's an 11-inch stroke, so it's just 11 inches long.
Yeah.
It just sounds.
Yeah, it seems big because there's, but there'll be a lot of, yeah.
Is the illumination adjustable?
We can make it.
In the event that you might run into an issue, maybe down the line.
Yeah.
Down the line, it could with the neighborhood, that it could be, if it's awful.
If you ever run into an issue, you'd be able to adjust.
That's a.
As a suggestion.
Very good suggestion.
Thank you. If there are no other questions for her, I'm going to see if there's anybody in the, is anyone in the audience who would also like to speak on this issue?
No.
No?
I'm the pastor, good evening.
No, you don't want to talk? Come on, you have to give us something. Say hello.
Introduce yourself.
Introduce yourself.
Yeah, how are you?
Just let us know your name and your address.
It's good to be a part of the town, so thank you for assisting us. I've been seeing you around, of course, at the site, and Maria Ryan-Wogg has been pretty good to us in trying to get all the approvals for the project. So we're hoping to enhance the community by doing a good architectural project. We were originally in the south end by the cathedral, and of course, with all of the gentrification and parking, limited parking.
Yeah.
We sold our church and came to Abington, and so it's, it's been a good transition. And so Signs by J. is just working on that signage with the cross in terms of, it's really, it's really just on the building per se, not like on the street where it was 10 feet in, where it's a sign in terms of telling what you're doing for events, like electronic sign a year ago. This is just pretty much the name of the church and the cross, so.
And you are, I'm sorry. Your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm Carl Thompson. Carl Thompson, yeah, nice to meet you all as well.
The building looks very nice.
Yeah, good.
Lot of work.
Lot of work. You're glad with the, you're happy with the design? Our architect, that's a good design.
Yeah.
Without the comment.
We tried to, we tried to make sure it blended in with the community.
Yeah.
Within the neighborhood and the houses and the construction, because there was one house across the street, I think it was dilapidated, and they put four units and they did it right across the street after we purchased the property from Lisa. And over time, I left, that's, she's the chair of trustee board, that's Barbara Hamilton.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
And actually, she used to be over Parks and Development Authority for the City of Boston. I'm actually the chaplain for the City of Boston Fire Department as well.
Oh, wow.
Thank you for that. Huh? Okay. Oh, you fire, yeah? Okay, yeah, yeah.
Well, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Thanks for coming up.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up and introducing yourself.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So we should entertain a motion to close the meeting to the public?
Motion to close the meeting to the public. Motion to close the meeting to the public, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
I think they kinda signed out here, I think this would be like, it has to be, if it's approved, you know, they, they can't have it, you know?
No, I, I think, I think they've got this...
Mr. Negreli were signed out.
Were you signed out?
Wait, 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 wait.
Not my name, right?
I don't think a pastor ever signs out.
Good job on my name.
Pastor signs in all the time.
Do you think we should mention the halo lighting that is adjustable, so that at some point there's an issue with it, that it's, it's designed to be adjustable, and the halo lighting seems to be lower direct impact on neighbors, right?
Correct, it, it is much, a much softer effect than anything that would be face split.
An adjustable.
And putting it on a dimmer is not an issue.
Okay, and is that also include the cross, is that halo lit as well?
They're all the same.
They're all the same, okay, I just wanna make sure that I understood.
It's white and then against the contrast of the color of the building.
Okay.
It'll, it'll be pretty subtle, actually.
Yeah. Well, if we limit the hours and where dimmer, then what else would be added to it?
Well, I, I, I will, I will also add to it, Chapter 175, Section 58, Subsection 4, with a light limitation sign from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, there's no lighting at all.
Right.
Instead of 11:00, I'd like to get it down to 10:00.
Yeah, it is a residential area, correct.
Right.
All right.
Any other discussion about this?
No.
I mean, it seems like we should approve this with those extra words.
Well, I think we should approve it, I don't want no lighting put in there.
We're gonna have open house in the...
Well, that's awesome.
You guys will open...
We'll look forward to it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't have any issue with this, if they have a dimmer and this, you know, recognize that this is, we can't really go any further without a whole bunch more effort.
Right.
So, I would entertain a motion then if we're, we're to that point.
Okay.
A petition presented to us, the Signs by J for a waiver under 175-58-3, Section B Number 1, the property owned by the Ebenezer Baptist Church, President Reverend Kyle B. Thompson, the property is located at 30 Central Ave, Abington, Mass, located in Assessors Map 40, Lot 41, in the Assessa 30, R30 Zone, with the contingency of Section 175, Section Dash 58, Section 4, to limit the siding lighting to not, to be turned off from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
And maybe could add something about, we're granting waiver as presented to us in their application, which would suggest halo lighting.
You want me to do that?
Yes.
One moment, please.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Chairman, one more time for the, for the good days, as they say. On the petition submitted by J, J for, Signs by J for waiver under 175-58, Got 3, Section B 1, property owned by the Ebenezer Baptist Church, President Reverend Kyle B. Thompson, the property located at 30 Central Ave, Abington, Massachusetts, located in Assessors Map 40, Lot 41, Residential 30, R30 Zone, with the continuation, or inclusion of a change to the regulation under 175-58, Section 4, that lighting will be, will, will stop at 10:00 PM till 6:00 AM, and the lighting utilizes, is a lighting, being utilized as a illuminated channel letters, halo lighting, which can be dimmed if, if at all necessary in the future.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, it was nice to meet you folks.
God bless, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, next item on our agenda, um, let's see, all right, I gotta read the thing correctly here.
Yep.
Yeah, the petition by Best Price Signs and Printing for Special Permit under 175-58-21 for a digital sign or electronic sign, and for waivers under 175 dash 58.3B1, the property is owned by Krishna, Krishna LLC, Resident Agent Suha Spatell, property is located at, just make sure of the address, 751 Bedford Street, Abington, Mass, located on Assessors Map 46, Lot 183, in the Highway Commercial Zone, please let us know who you are and your address.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes.
The mix up in the, in the address?
In the address, yes.
Would neighbors, anybody notify?
Everybody got the one that said 751.
Okay, just double checking, I just wanna make sure that...
Everyone got the one, the 751, the map and lot is correct.
Okay.
It was just a script, it was a script, it was average, yes.
All right, very good.
Please let us know your name and address, sir.
Yeah, good evening to everyone, my name is Gilmar, I have, I have done many projects in the city, is a, I'm living in Abito, in a, the company, Best Price Signs is my company, I have the company for 25 years, I live in Abito, and I'm, I'm homeowner in Abito, and that's why I will make sure, all the job I do, not only the Abito, and Have You Seen the Special in Abito, the city where I live, where I have my property, given them the best work as possible, this project is, is similar to other project I have done in the city, we have done some sign exactly the same size, the same, the same, exactly same size, you understand, I have done to different location.
Oh, this is Rosie's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have existing sign.
Yeah.
We wanna, wanna replace the, we have a changeable letters for a digital sign, for do the promotion, and I will provide to him, because I know, I have done the sign for Giadinos, for Billy's Liquors, all digital signs, we have done on the city, and I know the regulations, and we provide to the customer every day, even the train, make sure he's have the beam, and have to, the message only to stand every minute, and have to shut, shut off every 10 o'clock in the night, and here, that's pretty simple project.
So you're gonna, you're gonna reuse the, the pillars that are there and reface the sign, and then add an electronic message board underneath?
Yeah, they have existing box in good condition.
Yep.
We only gonna replace the face.
Right.
On the top of the sign, and the bottom part we're gonna remove, you're gonna put electronic sign.
Right.
Everything gonna be at the same size, we're not gonna change anything else, of course, we're gonna paint the post, make the sign a little bit beautiful, you know, the sign look, look pretty ugly right now.
Could you put that existing sign up there now, it seems like it's sort of got in, like, structured view as you're entering and thinking about, is it complying with the existing regulations?
We would probably, when the application is applied for, take a look at it, just to make sure it's structurally sound, in turn, Gilmar has done a lot of business, and a lot of these types of electronic signs in the town, so he's experienced in knowing whether or not the structure will hold what it is he's proposing, all the electronic signs we have, he has done, this one's a little smaller.
Yeah.
And a little bit more compact.
I was gonna say that if you look at, if you look at the old sign...
Right, to stay within the existing post.
And if you see, you can see where this, the, the old sign goes down a little more, this one's a shorter one.
Yeah.
And then they lifted up the electronics, correct?
Right, yes.
'Cause I'm just judging by the vehicle there, now that vehicle, person in that vehicle can see.
The line of sight is, is approved.
Right, and the top one you really can't.
Yeah.
So it's an improvement.
My first observation when I looked at it before I knotted and said to you folks was the line of sight was increased, which was good to see.
Yeah, yeah.
But the box you have there right now is exactly the same size of the electronic we plan to put up.
Okay.
Nothing gonna be changed, maybe when we did the design, the, we missed that part.
It's like Andrew was saying, they just, also make sure it's structured, sound, make sure that it doesn't block the view of existing...
And that would be taken care of when the building, when the permit applications applied for, and, you know...
We would handle that.
And you're gonna handle, well, we always go through this with these signs about how, you know, they're flashing these things through.
Correct.
Are they gonna have a time limit on, what they can do, and that's gonna be on you guys to set that all up?
Currently, it's 61 message every 60 seconds.
Okay, yeah.
Um, it, it's under the zone, under the electronic sign.
Okay, so that's on your end.
So they have to meet, yes, that will, and that will be in the conditions.
Okay, that'd be the requirements of the buildings.
Right.
It's the standard procedure in the office, we'll do three site visits at different times.
Make sure.
At all different times to make sure that it's what it should be.
And there's many electronic signs that people don't see that often, Rosie's Liquor is gonna be one.
All the time.
That's gonna be hard to miss, that it doesn't meet the criteria, or the conditions.
I mean, every time I drive by, I always look at that sign for some reason, I don't know what it is, it used to be a restaurant, that's why, many years ago.
Bowser's?
Yes, seafood.
Yep. Used to do fish there. In the train room.
I don't have any more questions for him, does anyone else have questions for him?
I do not have any more questions.
Is there anyone else here that would like to come and speak on this issue? Okay, I would entertain a motion to close...
Motion to close the public hearing, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna have a discussion with the board then, it just seems like an obvious thing for us to approve as, as submitted, particularly with his reputation and residence in Abington.
And then what we can see here, it looks to me, and probably to all of us, that it's an improvement.
Correct.
And the building inspector will, in charge of, well, the building department in charge of all regulations on, of, what they put on there, the time limits and all this.
We have done so many business with the here in Abito.
Yep.
And like I say, I, I live right here behind us, the city.
Excellent.
So I have my property where you see the road, I'm not gonna mess up my own yard.
We have a fantastic relationship with prior properties, where compliance has been met at all times.
Excellent. Marion, this falls under the commercial lighting requirements, this is on off, eleven o'clock to 6:00 AM, stuff like that, no electronic messaging during the 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM?
Correct.
Stuff like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Well then, any further discussion with the board?
Nothing from me, no.
Somebody wanna make a, a motion then?
I'm gonna roll. You're gonna roll, you're rolling great.
Well, the petition by Best Sign and Printing for Special Permit under 175-58.2, Section I, for a digital electronic sign, for the waivers under 175-58.3, Section B 1, at the property owned by Krishana LLC, Resident Agent Shashash Patel, the property being located at 751 Bedford Street, Abington, Massachusetts, located on Assessors Map 46, Lot 183, in the Highway Commercial Zone, I vote we approve this, these waivers. Special permit, are we supposed to do one and then the other, or both?
I think we should do both of them here.
Yeah.
So my, my petition is to approve both at the same time. Second?
Um...
What do you need to change it? What do you think we need to...
I think that should be fine, now, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you'll get a, a letter from Marion at, when she gets the...
Yeah, you should be familiar with this.
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, the final item on our agenda tonight is...
I'm gonna step out on this one, because I live on Diane Circle.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The opposite ends of the gang.
I know, I was gonna say, I don't even know the guy, but...
We should recognize Andrew being a voting member in this.
I'm just gonna step, uh, off the door and let these guys handle it.
Andrew, that would be a voting member, right?
It's rules that we have.
Just to recover it?
Don't take personally.
I'm not taking personally, I know you like...
I get one other thing I gotta...
Yeah, it's right here.
Uh, yes, please.
Next second.
I have to read this first, the petition of the O'Neal family, 2008 revocable trustee Christopher O'Neal, for a special permit under zoning by law 175-26C for construction of a 40 by 40 accessory structure with barn doors, the property is located at 70 Diane Circle, Abington, Massachusetts, on Assessors Map 13, Lot 36, in the Residential R40 Zone. Wanted to note that Richard Negreli, another board member, lives on Diane Circle, has recused himself from this, and so Andrew will stand in for him, well, not for him, but he, he will be the other voting member in this matter, so we should come up and tell us what...
Name and address, please.
Name and address, what, and what you wanna do.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Christopher O'Neal, I live at 70 Diane Circle, I've been there for roughly 15 years, and I was on Jennings Drive before, so what I, what happened was, a few years ago, the town put up some land for auction, I bought, I was on a half acre land, well, I still am on the half acre lot there, you see my existing house on the left, I purchased the land next to me, which is half wet, with the idea of putting an accessory structure over there, and I was, when I went to pull the permit, I found that my square footage was gonna be over what, what was recommended, so I had to get the special permit, so I'm coming here seeking a special permit under that to build it, it's gonna be a 40 by 40 structure, and I think we're limited to 875 square, so I'm looking for a special permit, just to bump the size up.
Okay. So it looks like it's gonna be a garage, and then what's gonna be on the side, like a storage area, or?
Yep, so, so what it's gonna be is, I'm, I'm a, I have a boat addiction, to be honest with you, so right now I store two 25-foot boats next to my house in my side yard, this is simply gonna store the boats, so I can tinker around with them, I also have three daughters and a wife, so I need all the space I can get, so that's, that's really it, so yeah, no, no major storage, nothing of consequence, to be honest.
Nobody's living in there, you're not doing any type of...
Nope.
Automotive work or anything?
I'm sorry?
No, like automotive work or anything, you're not gonna have like a garage in there or anything like that?
No, that's not the point.
Okay, okay.
Any bathrooms?
Uh, no.
Any running water?
Uh, no, I might, well, I might try and put some water in there, I mean, I don't know, if it's not allowed, that's fine, I mean, there's no...
No, I'm just asking.
There's no plans for water, yeah, it's, basically a bond structure.
Anything upstairs? Is the upstairs structure closed off for a separate space?
It will be, it's for some storage, it'll just...
So you'll have separate space, walk-up space, or?
Yes, there will be some walk-up space, yes, it's limited, just 'cause if you see the designs.
Yeah.
It's just like, I wouldn't call it crawl space, but it's just...
No, but you can get...
Limited storage area.
Yeah, okay.
And so anything behind, or is that just all wetland?
That's all wet, yeah, we're gonna, I have a battle ahead of me with conservation, we had to kinda move it, it's actually changed, we moved it closer to the existing structure just to give more, because apparently the buffer zones have to be 35 now.
Right.
So we, it's technically over this, this, it's over five or 10 more feet to the left as we're looking at it, so, but yeah, that's just gonna be riprap going down into the existing, existing wetlands, and then the rest to the west, so that'd be the west side, over on the right, that, that's all town-owned conservation land.
Are you using crushed out, or are you using gravel, or are you using driveway paved for the whole driveway?
For the driveway?
Yeah.
The driveway itself will be pavement.
All of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and then the, pardon my ignorance on this, it's called riprap on the backside going down into the wetlands.
Right.
Pretty good.
Thank you. I just learned that last week, but I can't take credit.
That's fine. So the, the doors on this building are gonna be facing the driveway?
Correct, yep, the left side of that structure is you're looking at it, yeah, I'm not going, that's, the street's not finished any further, so it would have to, it will be facing my existing house.
Is the proposed driveway part of the existing driveway that was currently there, and is it gonna be expanded, or?
Correct, it's gonna be expanded to enter the, the structure.
Um, no questions, Mr. Chairman?
I was looking at, you know, for the lot coverage of, of buildings plus pavement, well, you, you, it's a, it's a large lot, though, now that...
Now it is, yeah, it's, now it's a full acre.
Okay.
It's conforming now.
So we went from nonconforming to conforming?
Correct, yes, sir.
Right, so...
And we combined, I should say, we combined the two lots just this year, so technically on record, it's not till January 1st that there'll be, but it was just a, I included the email and the...
Yep.
I spoke with Mrs. Harris.
Rosie, yeah.
Yes.
Right.
So I think that's just a formality in the paperwork, but...
Okay.
Yeah, and there is a, there is a sewer easement on the, but that's on the left side of the house, so we won't be affecting that.
And as you said, to, to the back of the building, then, there's no, no butters, And as you said, to, to the back of the building, then, there's no, no butters, no, no, nobody behind your garage that you built?
Correct, correct, all the way, it technically goes to Broughton.
Okay.
Yeah, it goes to, I believe that's Beaver Brook.
Shark Hut.
Yeah. A lot of hunters out there, but that's, that's about it.
Yeah. Just make sure your post not hunting.
I know, I know, believe me, I wish it would good.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I don't have any other questions to answer.
Nope.
Well, then I think we should close the meeting to the, or see if anybody in the audience would like to come up and speak on this.
Or not, I think she's done.
All right, so let's, let's entertain a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then board discussion, this seemed like a well-thought-out project, and I admire the fact that he has two twenty-five foot votes.
Yeah, but I, I more than admire the fact that he bought abandoned land and then made his property conforming as opposed to non-conforming.
Right.
So I salute you for that.
Yes.
Not all of us have that opportunity or the advantage to do so, so.
I'm grateful for that issue. Yeah. I think this is, it looks like it would be a good project, and it, once, he said with, they had to move the proposed garage over a little bit because of conservation.
Because of conservation, yeah, and I assume obviously that's good, I know that's not your forte, but they're gonna, I assume, they'll be a little more uncomfortable with it, that gives them so close to the buffer zone, but.
Right.
I think, I think we're gonna satisfy that.
Great, um, Marion, do we, what do you, if they move that over, do we have to get another one of these sheets that site plans approved, or?
What will, what will happen is, should the board move forward with this, after the appeal period and the application is applied for, then we will add conservation commission to the step. So, in the, in the same time we've spoken, and I said it's in your best interest to get ahead of this and go to the conservation, and see whether or not a notice of intent or RDA or any of things, you know, that they require is done, because if they stop building permit process, it's gonna be because we need their approval, based on the buffer zones that align this property.
Right, but we don't need to worry about that ourselves, you do.
Right, correct. Correct, he does.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, just wanna make sure I was really clear on this, so that we didn't miss a step or something.
No, that'll be a building permit step, and, and in the same time, because we know that will be an issue, we always inform the applicant or the property owner, get in front of it, and, you know, go to the conservation.
Right.
I believe that's coming, we just put in that paperwork, so I assume the next meeting, conservation.
Do you have another question?
No, I don't have anything else.
So I'm gonna make a motion on this matter, then if we don't have any further discussion.
You up for an answer?
Sure, I'll make a, a motion to approve the petition in the O'Neill family about two, two thousand eight revocable trust for a special permit under zoning by law one twenty, one seventy-five twenty-six point C, for construction of a forty by forty accessory structure with barn doors. The property is located at seventy Diane Circle, Abington, on Assessor's Map thirteen, lot thirty-six, in the residential R. forty zone. No conditions on that, I think we already said over that, yeah.
No.
Okay, yeah.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes, and-
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
And then Tommy went out, you know, after the-
Give this to me, Dave, okay. I don't need you.
Should entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Not yet.